Good evening. We'll call the March 12th Joplin Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, Mrs. Worsler.
David Neberg?
Present.
Ronald Sherwood?
Present.
Matthew Robinson?
Here.
Donnie Greening?
Present.
Martha Schroeder?
Present.
John Hurd?
Here.
Ryan Hart.
Present. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Schroeder, a, excuse me, a motion by Ms. Schroeder, a second by Mr. Weaver to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on this item? Hearing done, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. The agenda is approved. Our board presidents report. Dr. Seketa.
Okay, we're gonna go off script just a little bit tonight to show appreciation for our Board of Education in Missouri. This is Board Appreciation Month, and our schools have been doing different things throughout the district to show appreciation for the Board, inviting Board members to celebrations at the schools and so on, and tonight is a celebration of all the work that our Board members do. I want to read to you the Governor's Proclamation, and then we have some more surprises. Whereas a system of quality public education is essential to the future of our state and nation, whereas the people of Missouri have a long tradition to support of public education in their local school districts, and whereas local school boards are the ultimate expression of the unique American institution of representative governance of public school districts, and whereas local school boards acting on behalf and in close connection with the people of their communities chart the direction of education in their communities, and whereas local school boards serve as the key community advocate for children, youth, and public schools, now therefore I, Michael L. Parsons, Governor of the State of Missouri, do hereby proclaim March 24th to be School Board Recognition Month. Thank you very much, School Board. Let's all give them a round of applause. So, so we have several surprises for you, and you have surprises from North Middle School, Joplin Jag, and other schools in the district. Soaring Heights has a presentation they want to come up right now, the Soaring Heights administration, Ms. Brewer and Mr. Thompson, and some of their students. No, we don't.
So, good evening, thank you. We're here to represent all Joplin Elementary Schools. We've brought some of our, or someone that happened to tell you their first name, and then the grade that they're in, and then we have something we have to give to you as an introduction if that begins here. So first, let's hear from you, your name and grade.
My name is Lillian Wright, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Benjamin, and I'm in second grade.
My name is Lincoln, and I'm in first grade.
My name is Paul Gibson, and I'm in fifth grade.
So, we have prepared a Board Member Survival Kit for you because we recognize how difficult this journey is that you're on. So, my friend and I are going to pass out the Survival Kit, and Mr. Thompson, and Paul are going to read some information to you so you understand what's in that kit.
Paul's the better reader of the two of us, so I'm gonna let him go ahead and lead this off, but this is just a brief explanation of what you guys are getting in your Survival Kits here. Paul?
So, in our School Board Survival Kits, we, we have a tackle box because you hold us together. We have lifesavers to remind you that you are a lifesaver, Tootsie Rolls to help you roll with your punches, Starburst for a burst of energy when you need one, a peppermint patty to keep you cool, bubble gum to help you get through sticky situations, hugs to show you all the love you deserve, plants because you help us grow, and we appreciate you guys.
Very good. So, we're gonna have to get you a shopping cart to bring, take all your stuff to the car. That's excellent. Thank you very much, Soaring Heights, and students. And our next presentation is from Joplin High School, Sound Dimension, under the direction of Monica Brown.
So, all the students are getting set up. Um, we're making, I think I'm making an audio here. Also, we have another voice, this is one of our two show choirs at Joplin High School, this is Sound Dimension. Uh, as you can tell, this is a Massapee, it's a private autism center choir. We also have another show choir called Dimension Plus, which is a little kind of a power show choir. Um, you can sit there. It's just like, oh. I just wanted to, sorry. I try to be in charge, but it was sometimes. Anyway, we are, we've had a very successful season, and every competition that we have competed, these, both of our choirs have reached first, second, and third place, trophies in the, well, period divisions in all, both choirs, and every competition against finals. Um, we've taken first, second, no, second, third place in all of those that we've competed in. So, um, we've had a great season, and we are super excited to be able to perform for you. Um, real quick, I just wanted to shout out to the parent or your person who is supporting our Joplin Show Choirs, if they'd like to stand up their way. Thank you for coming out. And also, if you'd like to formally invite any of you, we have our post-show concert performances Thursday night in the auditorium at Joplin High School, starts at seven o'clock, both choirs will be performing, and in addition to that, our Little School Choir will also be performing at that. So, it starts at seven o'clock this Thursday night. It's our post-show, we always do a concert at the end of our season, however, this year that's, this is not the end of our season, we do a whole competition in April that we're going to go to in Chisinau. So, we're really excited, expect to play some finals in that competition as well. Tonight, we're going to do the middle chunk of our show. If you can't, I don't know, you just, you know, figure it out. Our show this year is about jemini. Uh, and so, we're going to do that middle part of our show, starting with what we call Jemini Part Two. Uh, and it's a story about a young boy, a girl who falls upon a game that they don't understand, and in this game, they get trapped in the jungle, they have to go through a lot of obstacles, we are the obstacles, um, in the beginning, and then they all come together and then you're a part of a team that is working together to survive the game. So, without further ado, I'd like to give to you Joplin Sound Dimension.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. I think Joplin just won the best Board Appreciation Board Meeting in the state of Missouri tonight, so let's, uh, let's thank everybody once again for being here. Yeah, we only, only the best here, and as well as, I didn't know that we were gonna do all this tonight, so they, they kept a good secret from us, so we're surprised and thoroughly surprised, so we're so thankful that people took time of their evening to spend time with us and to share a little bit of their talents, because we are so much more enriched by what you do for us versus the other way around, so we are the recipients of so much good tonight. We have more celebrations here in the district as well. I'd like to share a little bit about the Franklin Technology Career Fair. What a great showing of regional careers and post-secondary opportunities this year at Franklin Tech's High School Career Fair. Students at JHS and FTC were invited to speak to local businesses, university, college, and military representatives to help them explore their options after graduation. Thank you to all of the community representatives who stopped by to chat with our Eagles. Jefferson Elementary's Books and Breakfast. Earlier this month, families were invited to the Books and Breakfast Event, complete with green eggs and ham, the Cat in the Hat, and had time to read together and participate in activity stations. This was a great time for families to engage at school with their students, and we know that when families are engaged at school, their students have greater success in the classroom. Thank you to the 144 guests and all those who made this event possible. Musical Fifth Graders. Joplin Schools Band Teachers gave fifth grade students the opportunity to touch, hear, hold, and manipulate a variety of band instruments. Fine arts are a fantastic way for students to become involved in a program that fosters collaboration and self-expression, nurturing well-rounded individuals prepared for the challenges beyond school. Thank you to our band program directors for encouraging a new generation of musicians. Joplin Eagles Represented at DECA State. Nine students were top-ten finalists. Ty Matheson, Anna Tyson, Alyssa Keen, Becca Tyson, Jacob Tatum, Lucy Erisman, Adrian Gonzalez, Alana Bertram, Garen Berry, and Will Cooper. Seven students placed in the top six and will go on to compete at the International Career and Development Conference next month in Anaheim, California. Alex Brady, fifth in Independent Business Plan. Ian Horton, sixth in Principles of Finance. Abigail Eckert and Caroline Erisman, fifth in Principles of Marketing. Aidan Coke, first in Business, Financial Services, and Top Test Scores. And Adrian Gonzalez and Lucy Erisman, Gold Certified Recertification. We love to see these business-minded students applying their learning in practical, award-winning ways, and wish you all the best at Nationals. Thank you to the Knights of Columbus. We are so thankful to our friends at the Knights of Columbus Don Roderick Council 7307 for their friendship and support of the work being done at Beacon, Dunaway Education Center and Beacon Autism Center. These friends raised $851.15 through this year's Tootsie Roll Drive, supporting those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. DEC Program Director Sean Howard and staff members say they'll seek several ways to use these funds in support of their students' growth, autonomy, and joy. Thank you for partnering with Joplin Schools to help keep all of our students learning for a better tomorrow. Wonderful things happening here in Joplin Schools, and we are so proud as a board to be a part of those exciting items throughout the district. Next is our Student Advisor Report, Ms. Rutledge.
So, though the month is not over yet, there have already been notable things to celebrate in the school district. The first one is when DECA qualified for state on March 2nd. JHS Speech and Debate Students participated in individual and debate events during the Misha State Qualifying District Tournament. Six of the students qualified for state, and JHS was led by Aza Bodhorn and Jaden Kimmer, who went undefeated in cross-examination or policy debate. Also, JHS Public Forum Teammates Alyssa Keen and Ty Matheson finished third and will, and competed in state finals. Lincoln Douglas debaters Kate Tyson finished fourth, and Eve Phillips finished ninth overall. Public Forum Teammates London England and Anna Armstrong finished fourth as well. The team's collective efforts in debate Saturday resulted in JHS receiving the second-place District Debate Sweet States Trophy depicted. The JHS Individual Event Competitors also qualified for the state finals. Kate Sinclair was triple-entered at districts and will represent JHS in both humorous and dramatic interpretation. Alyssa Keen will represent JHS in two events as she received third place. Ty Matheson will represent JHS in two events as he received third place in international exempt speaking. And also, Kat Schaefer will compete in poetry at state after her second-place finish in finals.
Thank you. The Superintendent's Data Report.
Okay, Mr. Riddle, would you come on up, please? And we have a presentation from McKinley. Eric will fire it up here on the screen, and Principal Jason Riddle is gonna tell us about McKinley Elementary, and they've been a fabulous host tonight, thank you very much, and we've enjoyed talking to your staff as well, celebrate McKinley.
Um, so absolutely, I wanna give a multiple thank you shout-outs for, first, to our School Board for touring our building, eating dinner with us. Central Office Team, our prep team that got everything ready, and last but not least, our wonderful McKinley teachers, they are fabulous. All right, I'll go through our presentation here. So, as you can see, if you direct your eyes to our screen up here, McKinley Elementary, I believe that's our last screen, Eric. So, our school motto at McKinley is "Students First." I'm sorry. Children first, students always. There we go. And, um, I'll wait for Eric to get that on full screen. Are you on, Eric? Good? Okay. So, we took a little staff picture here, you'll notice that we're all wearing reindeer ears. If you didn't hear it on the national news, we did have a, I believe, a five-point, six-point buck that came into our back doors during bus dismissal, it was quite the predicament for us. I answered multiple phone calls that night, one from Carrie, uh, one, multiple ones from parents, but it was pretty cool. We have a little slow reindeer crossing, we've got that down by our library, just so the deer do know where to go if we have any more encounters. All right, at McKinley, our staff, our students, we are in the philosophy of we will work very hard, but we also play very hard. Our staff is full of continuous learners, and an important note here, we put in that we do have five male professional staff, two male support staff. I know not all of our school sites, especially the elementaries, do not have the male representation that we do. We feel it's important, it's a role model for a lot of our female and male students that come through that may not necessarily encounter a male role model at home. And if you look below in that white section from 2017 to 2024, uh, thank you. Staff experience has grown from 2017 to 2023 there. We started at 6.8 years' experience, we are now at 10.0. So, when our staff come here, um, we build a great culture from the para all the way up to the principal, cafeteria workers to the bus drivers, we are all one unit here, we're all part of the staff development, student development here, so as you can see, we're at 10 years. I think that's very important. And staff advanced degrees, back in 2017, we had about a fourth of our staff, 27.3%. We are now at 46, we're almost halfway with our staff having some form of advanced degree, so we are very excited about that. One moment here that we want to go over is our Teacher of the Year for Joplin- Um, one moment here that we wanna go over is our Teacher of the Year for Joplin Schools. She is at our very own McKinley Elementary. If you were here during the tour, she was the one that walked everyone through the tour. She's District Teacher of the Year. She's been at McKinley for 20 years. She's had multiple Golden Apple nominations. Uh, she's been Building Teacher of the Year. She's served on multiple committees, building level and district level. She's a mentor not just for our staff and teachers, but for Mr. Riddle as well. As a PE teacher here, when I did, um, after-school tutoring and things of such, I always went to Mrs. Davis to help me with my reading tutoring groups. And she's been fabulous ever since. Nothing's changed in 20 years. So, a little shout-out to Ms. Davis. What we know about McKinley. What we know about our staff and teachers at McKinley is that they are accommodating and they are very compassionate. Um, our PTO is very involved, very helpful for our students and teachers. They are always in, um, engagement with myself, with our staff. They have something going on every week. We love it. Big part of our school community. Our students comes to school eager to learn. They are always growing academically. Several of our students encounter many challenges. We've talked about that tonight, I'm sure, with our, our teacher staff. Uh, many of our students have as many or more needs as any students that you'll find in our district. But we are up to the challenge. Our teachers are willing and ready. So, we'll look at a little bit of data here. Um, the blue is the district. I believe the blue is our district. And yes, the green is McKinley. So, I'll let you go through that a little bit. If you look at our reduced lunch, um, we are quite a bit higher than the district level. If you look at students with disabilities, our district is at 21% and our building is at 19.59. That is just a tad off. I believe we are actually at 16.917% per the state data report. You will go to the next slide. If you notice, we do have a pretty good African-American population at McKinley compared to the district. Go to the next slide. So, interesting to note here, NWA growth from fall to winter. 60% of our first through fifth grade students have met their growth goal in math. 52% from second through fifth grade have met their goal in reading. Well, 48% of our three through five students have met their goal in language. And half of our students in fourth and fifth have met their growth, growth goal in science. Um, interesting to note on that last slide, even though that was our winter growth, um, range, we've actually already met our B-SIP goal for the year from our winter data. So, we are very proud of that. Teachers have worked very hard to get that growth. This is our 2022 M-SIP Summary Report. If you notice in the top right-hand corner under Performance Percent Points Earned, we are at 57.8%. Continuous Improvement, we're at 50%, which gives us a total of 57.0%. And on that same right-hand slide, our designation, you'll read a lot of Approaching, 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 Average, Average, Average. But when we get to the next couple of slides, we will, um, show you some major increases that we're very excited and happy about. Next slide, please. This is still the 2022 Summary Report. Um, KEA, if you notice that, it's on the top, um, part of the slide. Points Possible 4.0, Points Earned 4.0. We were, we, we received 100% of those points. And that is a shout-out to our kindergarten team for getting all of those students screened. And that is no small task to get your kindergarten kids coming in to get them screened. Unfortunately, when you look at our percents for attendance, we're at 0%, but this is 2022. So, next slide. Now, here we are in 2023 Report. Performance on the far right-hand corner, we're at 73.2%. Massive gain. Our Continuous Improvement is at 75 and our Overall's at 73.4. So, we've grown from 57 to 73.4. Very excited about that. Thank you, Eric. Next slide. And as you will look at our Success Ready Students, again, our kindergarten have done those 100% of our screeners. And this time, our attendance, we earned half of our percentage points. So, that helped go up in 2023. Thank you. And so, we get to our attendance information. If you look from 2017 to 2024, our attendance and enrollment has fluctuated. Back in 2020, of course, you know that was COVID. We, we lost a huge majority, or I'm sorry, not a huge majority, but a huge group of students. And then we slowly have been building back. We are currently at 317 students. If you look at our proportional attendance, we are up until 2020. And then that year after, we made a major dip, but we have slowly risen year after year. And we are now 80.3%. And that is as of the end of February. Some of our school initiatives at McKinley. We have a program called Walk to Read. It's a 25-minute program. We do it in the morning. We include classroom teachers, title teachers, specials teachers, and a sped teacher. We have small groups of students that are focused on phonics instruction. And we work on reading at their level. And we've made major gains on our reading growth. Another, um, initiative at McKinley is our Attendance Initiative. At the beginning of the year, once we have students for the first two weeks meet 90% or higher, we give those kids a vest and a pin. Following that, every month, we add on a new pin. As you can see, we have multiple, um, decorations and colors. And these go for our teachers and students. And we also include a perfect attendance pin. We feel that this has helped our attendance, um, this school year. Not huge significant gains, but it has been a gain that we are proud of. Furthermore, we do separate activities to increase our attendance. One of those things that we do is, two times a year, we do a glow party and we do a disco party for our students that have met their 90% or better attendance. And that's one of our attendance parties that took, took place in this gymnasium. We had highlighters, brought out the black lights, and we had the concession stand open. It was a lot of fun. Mr. Sissons knows how to dance. He got it going. Thank you. One of the other activities we did, we weren't for sure how this was gonna go. Um, very stressed out, very unsure how this was gonna figure out. It was great. Out of, at the time, we had 295 students that were enrolled. We had 230 students that met their 90% attendance goal. And we had 125 that marched with us. And it was a great event. Our students weren't real straight, but they were very colorful and happy. It was very fun. Um, another initiative that we do here is we write several hundred positive referrals. This can be from the bus driver to the cafeteria staff, to our teachers, to our staff. Everybody writes positive referrals. As of last year, at the end of the year, we were at 776 for the end of the year. At this, I think this was as of last week, we're already at 900. And so, we'll be well over 1,000 for this year. So, our teachers, our staff, our supplemental group, they are, uh, all bought in into writing positive referrals. And it does make a difference. Um, we try to do six-to-one, seven-to-one, positive versus negative. So, um, we feel that this has decreased our behavior referrals. We have the data to prove it. And we look at core values. We look at student achievement and anyone that's demonstrating those life principles. Um, a big initiative that we started at the end of last year, midway at the end of last year for first through fifth, was our Morning Assembly. This year, we incorporated kindergarten through fifth. We weren't sure how that was gonna go. It's been great. We have, uh, Mr. Sissons, our Success Coordinator, that leads. You can see him in the top right-hand screen. He leads our students through the pledge, through our school creed, our Miss Rules for Life, our different monthly "life principle" in quotes. Um, we are currently working on students in fifth grade taking over this initiative. And they will start leading this program in fourth quarter. And, uh, we, we go over attendance recognitions, birthdays. It's, it's a lot of excitement. It's a lot of excitement, isn't it, Mr. Sissons? And, uh, our, one of our other programs is our Title Programs. We have a Curriculum Night that we do at the beginning of the year. Our Refrigerator Curriculum that goes home with parents. That's in the top right-hand corner. And that gives, uh, our families information on what they do for English, Language Arts, for math, for social studies, whatever that may be. It's a great reference guide if they need assistance. Polar Express Family Day. We do that around Christmas time. Um, in about another month, we will do our map test prep night. We've never done one of those before, but we want to get our third, fourth, fifth grade families engaged, excited about the upcoming assessment and what they need to do to help us to help their child. Um, we do a monthly reading celebration for a reading log. And then we do two celebrations, one at first semester, one at second semester. And one of the, uh, activities that we've had in our library is a guest author. We do monthly life principle assemblies. We have a Student of the Month. We have a Student of the Month for Life Principle. We have one for Eagle Attitude. They get certificates. Um, they get lunch from Mr. Riddle. And we just do a lot of fun activities with that. And that's where we will recognize our McKinley readers in our specials, PE, Music, Art, and Library. They will come up and they will have a trophy that they give the best class for the month in one of those specials. And as you can see during our life principles, we wear our green vest from our Attendance Initiative. Our assemblies are like no other. We are decked out in green. It's something to see. It looks like you're going to a Kansas City Chiefs football game. It's, it's pretty cool. And so, that comes to the conclusion of our slideshow. McKinley Elementary, we are learning today for a better tomorrow. Were there any questions from myself or our staff? I do have to give a shout-out to John Hurd. He came by for lunch today. None of the kids recognized him. They kept saying, "Well, who, who's this?" Well, it's John Hurd. He's one of our school board, uh, members. He's representation for McKinley. Uh, and then finally, after about 20 times, we had to say, "He's a guy that wore the light-up vest at Christmas." Oh, yeah! Then he started getting high fives, fist pumps, and hugs. So...
Well, Mr. Riddle, thank you so much for the effort that you've put in today. You all have been so wonderful to host us tonight and we're just very excited to be with you. So, thank you for what you've done. And it shows. It shows in everything that you've done tonight. And it shows in the classroom and it shows with your students. So, thank you.
Thank you. Last shout-out to Mr. Sissons. He's one that created our slideshow, uh, spent considerable amount of time looking for data, creating those nice optics. So, thank you to Mr. Sissons.
Very good. Thank you again, McKinley staff. Okay, Dr. Mongi, Transitional Kindergarten.
Yes, and we actually just have a quick little video to show you to highlight our strategic focus this month. Transitional Kindergarten, this was our pilot year. We have some friends in the audience. I told them I would not make them come up, so I won't make them come up to the front. Um, but they have done remarkable work getting that kicked off this year. And, um, it's been a huge success. We are in the middle of kindergarten enrollment right now, which is part of our process to determine our best candidates for our Transitional Kindergarten. And so, to do that, we have put together a video with the help of Mr. Brad Douglas and Ms. Doning. And so, I will direct your attention to the screen.
The difference between Transitional Kindergarten and Early Board Meeting is that we need to work. It's, um, we need to learn, we need to react, and it's about other social emotional skills, language skills. Um, just things that students may be missing upon their kindergarten. Students that will be eligible for the TK program, some of these students have a late birthday, they're managing to buy. I had a little more, you know, early experiences for school, like, uh, or maybe preparing for maybe later years in charge. Maybe decide to go to TK program because my son is going to work there. His work isn't made. And so, we have a lot more sense to give for that extra year as to get grade four, actually, in order himself. And it's actually a little bit of a different time if we need to manage both socially, with our language skills, we need to communicate their needs and, um, feelings, and often the background. I've been able to say, I know how to remember who you're definitely getting to this program. I really appreciate that you're going to work here and that is getting older in the class. So, I'm seeing it's older because they're kind of learning as they get to be able to function better in situations, experience things like this. And so, I've been able to say it's not much to do with you.
Thank you. And I would just say, building a program from the ground up, these ladies have put in countless hours. So, I just wanna show my appreciation for them because they have done a lot of heavy lifting to make this successful.
Thank you very much for being here as well. Very nice video. Uh, Shelley Toft, our Health and Dental and Financial Statements.
Okay, first, I wanna thank, uh, Dr. Saketa for filling in for me in February. Um, but, uh, we'll move to our dental report. And through the first eight months of the year, we had spent a little over 5 million of our 7.5 million budget. Um, we did, this is an increase over the prior year of 6.6% or 300 and a little over 315,000. Are there any questions on the health and dental? Okay, um, moving on to the financial statements then. Um, on the condensed financial statement, we have received through the month of February 82.6% of our revenue. Um, as I mentioned, I think probably in January, we do get the bulk of our revenue with, uh, the local tax. We did also, one thing I wanted to, um, mention on the expenditures is the debt service fund. We paid our bond payments were due March 1st, so we paid those on the, the very end of February. So, we paid most of our debt service expenditures for the year. We still have 88.5 million invested in MOSIP and MOCAT. Earning rates from 4.753% to 5.66%. Are there any questions on the financial statements?
Looks like our expenses are, we're about two-thirds done with the school year and it looks like we're a little bit below budget on expenses?
Yes, we are. Um, we are seeing, uh, I had projected a few things, um, on some utilities that maybe we haven't had to experience. So, that's, that's been a good thing.
Good.
And, uh, and then we've had some staff, we haven't filled all of our staffing positions too. We have a few open positions that we haven't filled and that, that's taken some of that down.
Saying that, it looks like revenues are up a little bit and expenses, so that's a, a big help. So, thank you for your work.
For next year, yes.
Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you, Ms. Toft. Public Comments Regarding the Agenda Items. Ms. Worsler?
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved?
We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Mrs. Sherrick, to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Regular agenda, Accounts Payable. Ms. Toft?
On our Accounts Payable, our bill list tonight is 1.8 million, a little over that. Um, with the early board meeting, we do just have one bill list. Compared to a year ago, it was 3.1 million. The bulk of that difference is some Dover Hill, uh, billing that was on last year's Accounts Payable. Any questions?
Very small bill list. We're not used to that. I entertain a motion on Accounts Payable, please.
Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Ms. Schroeder, to approve our Accounts Payable as presented. Any discussion on this item? Please vote.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Budget Adjustments. Ms. Toft?
Okay, this is the second round of budget adjustments for the year. And, um, now that we're, uh, eight months into our budget, we have some, some changes to make with some grants that have been received. Um, some of those are a Flex Early Literacy Grant and Evidence-Based Learning Grant, um, and a Grants for Letters. And some of those expenditures that we had expended last year, Grants for Letters, and some of those expenditures that we had expended last year, but we actually got reimbursed for them this year. We also received a Supply Chain Grant of 451,000 to help with the rising food costs that we've seen in our food service department. Also, a safety grant, which I think we'll talk a little bit about that later in the meeting, but 300,000 that Mr. Harding was able to, and Dave Pettit was able to get for us. A cybersecurity grant that technology received, 166,000, and some of that expenditure may not happen until next year, depending on how everything goes through. And we had a few other smaller grants. All of those budget adjustments are detailed out in the supporting documents. We are projecting revenue adjustments of 3.1 million, expenditure adjustments of 2.9 million, for a net increase of 191,000 to our bottom line. Are there any questions?
Net positive. That's great.
We agree on that. Okay.
Just one question. Was any of this, the funding that we received back, was any of that a surprise, or did we know that was coming, and we just didn't know the exact timing of it?
The grants? Some of it, we knew it was coming, we didn't know amounts. The cybersecurity, I think that was a new one, I was not aware of that that was coming until we got them out. We knew that there was the security one, we just didn't know how much we were going to be getting until the state released.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we approve the budget adjustments.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Ms. Sherrick, to approve the expenditure budget adjustments as recommended. Any further discussion on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Career Ladder Plan, Dr. Mwongi.
Well, I was going to have a 17-minute video, but I guess I'll pull that. No, I'm kidding. I will present this quickly, but hopefully thorough, and then I do have a video that I will send you that you can reference later. This is a really exciting opportunity for our district. Those of you who have been in the education field for many years may remember the days of Career Ladder. That went away, of which we maintained that budget as Eagle Advantage that you know it today, with a little different caveat to that. The state has brought back Missouri Career Development and Teacher Excellence Plan, of which we are referring to our Career Ladder program. So this evening, what I would like to recommend, the board approve our Career Ladder Plan to submit our application to engage in this opportunity for next school year. This is a committee that has been working since about October, November. We've had a few different meetings to put this together. This is governed by state statute, and so there's a lot of state requirements and guidance and documentation within this. But essentially, what it offers is a voluntary performance pay matching program for our teachers. There is a $1,500 option at Stage 1, a $3,000 option at Stage 2. We would like to see the implications and how this goes from a budget standpoint, as Shelley and I have visited about it, before we would fully consider a Stage 3, which is a $5,000 opportunity. The piece within this that the committee felt really strongly about, that I just want to share, of how committed our educators are to improving student achievement, whether you are in Stage 1 or Stage 2, part of your commitment is 20 hours of tutoring. The other hours beyond the 20 to meet your 50 or your 75, depending on your stage, can be a variety of things, professional development, committee work, that sort of thing, but every educator who engages in Career Ladder will commit to 20 hours of tutoring. So we're really hopeful that this impacts not only a great opportunity for our teachers, but it also will impact our student achievement and our student connection beyond the school day. So I would recommend that the board approve our Career Ladder Plan. This is a 60-40 match, 60% from the state, 40% from the district, as far as the funding would go. We've made some estimates, but we, pending your approval tonight, we will submit our application, and then we'll do an intent to participate with our staff to really get firm on some budget recommendations.
I move that we approve the proposed Career Ladder Plan for the 24-25 school year as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Schroeder, a second by Mr. Greenlee, to approve the Joplin Schools' Career Ladder Plan for the 2024-2025 school year. Any further discussion on this item?
Just a question on the 40% that we pick up at the district. Do you have any ballpark as far as what you think that?
Yes, so we estimated, as a district, for this current school year, if 100% of eligible staff members would commit to that, the district expense would be about, 934,920 was our estimate, if 100% participated who were eligible.
How does that compare to the Eagle Advantage?
So the Eagle Advantage budget would be reduced to absorb some of this. Shelley and I have visited, once we get intent to participate from our staff, we can really firm up numbers of what that looks like. If they participate in Career Ladder, they would not participate in Eagle Advantage. Career Ladder is definitely more of a monetary incentive than the rates at Eagle Advantage, so it definitely would be in the teachers' interests to engage in Career Ladder, those who are eligible. But we've tried to, we kind of restructured Eagle Advantage this year with, this has kind of been a two-year process, to make sure that we kind of stack opportunities to really get our teachers engaged with some opportunities that we may have.
I would also point out that in the item that you presented to us, you mentioned the 934,000 dollar number, but the state contribution is in excess of $1 million, correct?
That is correct, yes. We're responsible for 40% plus benefits, and then the state will pick up 60% of that stipend.
Plus benefits?
We pay the percentage of it.
We pay the benefits, yes.
They just pay 60% of the stipend.
60% of the stipend, and we have to cover 40% plus the benefits.
So the benefits is already fixed cost already, so it's not like that's going to change anything.
I think this is a good way to say thank you to the teachers that are probably already doing a lot of this anyway, so I'm definitely in favor.
And it's also very beneficial to non-classroom certified staff as well.
Yes, there are opportunities for those certified in particular areas. I would just tell you, I have served on a lot of committees, I have facilitated a lot of committees. This Career Ladder Committee might be one of my favorites. We have some newer people in the district, veteran but new, as well as some really veteran staff to Joplin Schools, and their collaboration and accomplishments in a short window have been really tremendous. So it's been very refreshing, and I know some of our central office team has kind of seen that group work together, so it's been great.
Well, we're happy for anything that improves and helps our staff, so thank you. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Surplus items for auction, Mr. Harding.
Yes, just like, we have items in the district, we store a lot, and we store things face-to-face, and we have items that we are no longer in use, and so we would like to put those items in surplus, and hopefully soon conduct an auction to try to reach those items, and let people have access to it.
What kind of items? I didn't see anything on the list.
Well, I think Mr. Pettit's here to share a little.
It's time for spring cleaning. You name it, we probably have it. We never know from auction to auction what items have been surplus, from furniture to tables, to chairs, to computers, to stuffed animals, to CDs, DVDs, computers, just varies. But these are all things that are no longer of use to us. We do one of three things with everything that we have that we declare surplus. We either throw it away, we scrap it, or we sell it at auction. And so it's time that we, our buildings get full again, and so as spring cleaning takes place with some of the buildings, as they get things moved around, we're going to have a full building, and we need to have an auction.
We do this every year, right, just about?
At least every year, and there have been occasions, we've had two in a year, and I can think of on one occasion, we had three in a year, so.
How much do we usually make on them?
That can vary, probably, probably seven, seven, eight, nine thousand dollars would be typical. We have had auctions where we've had exceptionally larger items that have brought more money, but that's probably in the vicinity where we're typically at.
Do we do them anywhere from April, June? This kind of depends on when we get our paperwork together. The other piece of it is, anytime the principal calls me and says they need a piece of furniture or something, the first place I walk down to is the warehouse and walk around and make sure we don't have anything that we could use in the district.
I'd move that we approve the surplus items for auction.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Mr. Greenlee, to declare the item surplus and authorize auction. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. District-wide access control, Mr. Harding.
Yes, so this actually goes back to what Mrs. Toft was talking about, and when we were notified that we were awarded a grant from the second round, the Governor Park was with the safety grant, and we were awarded the maximum $300,000 for the grant. The other part was about 500, three other schools, districts, and the state also wore that grant, and so we were all kind of scrambling for the same prizes, and so we felt that access control for our district is a high priority for the safety of our kids and our staff. We're very happy with Dover Hill and their access control, and we're very happy with a couple of other schools that we put that into, so we would like to move towards that district-wide with all of our buildings. Now, that's going to cut down some of the access to some of the doors in the district, but that's the purpose of access control, is to keep people going to the door if you want them to, make sure your security door is secure. And so, they worked really hard and put a bid together. We were a little nervous about what we're going to come out and look like, because we know there's a high demand up there, and we have to negotiate with the number of doors, over 120 doors, we're going to have this control across the district. And so, we had a bid come back, had two bids actually come back, one from a local company and one from a company outside of town. Fortunately for us, the bid came in over, it was a company that has already done some work for us and we're very familiar with, and so that's going to cause some speeding up the process a little bit, but that's going to be a good thing, because our plan has fully completed by the time of next year. So.
Just want to note that by allowing us the possibility of putting in access control will, again, increase security. It won't add anything additional to our staff and teachers. They will essentially have a FOB, that they will be able to access particular doors to get into the building, and then they will also carry a classroom key. So, right now, they're carrying two keys, now they're going to have a FOB and a key, but this will allow us both the opportunity to control who and when comes into our buildings. If a FOB is lost, it's a lot easier than a key. We've had to rekey two buildings in the past 18 months because of lost or stolen keys, and so this will allow us just to take that particular FOB off of the system. We don't have to do anything with anybody else, and we'll just simplify and increase our security. So we're very excited about being able to do this.
Mr. Pettit, are, is the access going to be controlled by central office, or is it controlled by building?
We will do that by building. The software will allow us access to do it by building, and even so simple as allowing, if I gave you a FOB, I could decide what building you have access to and during what hours you would have access.
But it's going to be done by a central office staff member?
It's going to actually be done by our key guy, so he's moving from the key guy to FOB guy, so.
Thank you. Do you have a motion on this item?
I'll move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mrs. Sherrick, to approve the bid from TEC to install 119 access control entries across the district. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Policy update, Mr. Crawford.
I'd like to ask Melissa Albright, she's the Uniserv Director for JNEA, to come forward in any other bargain, or any other union members that you have with you. I didn't know if they were going to be able to make it or not. The president was going to try to make it as well, and chief negotiator, but they had some conflicts tonight, so Melissa is stepping in. She's the Uniserv Director for JNEA. I want to caution the board about too many questions on this item, because it has come out of negotiations, we're in negotiations at this time. I can answer more detailed questions in closed session, but we wanted to point out that we did bring this policy change to the board in December, and at that time, we asked for a 15% change in a sick leave early notice requirement for the district. And so we thought that was going to be a win for both the district and for our teachers. It turned out that we got some feedback that we needed to adjust that, and so that came out in our negotiations, which we're currently in. And so through that process, one of the agreements or suggestions was to raise that from 15% to 25%. And so the policy will act in place as it's already voted on, except that it will raise that amount from 15% to 25% to be a, pardon me?
For professional staff.
Yeah, for professional staff. It's different for our JESP. So this is for teachers and professional staff, literally the bargaining unit. And so also, I would add, the union wanted us to add that this, we hope, is a win-win, both for our teachers, to be a benefit for them, but it also could show a cost savings for the district. And so, they want us to point that out. I would say also that of our retirees that retired this year, that gave proper notice, that we would honor them with this going back, and giving to them this percent increase as well. So if they met the notice requirements under the 15% of policy as it was, with this change, we would go back and honor their early notice at the 25% level. Shelley, did you have anything you wanted to add, or did I?
No, I think you.
Melissa, did you have anything that you cared to add?
I just have a note from, good evening. Crystal Stokes Danner, chairperson for the bargaining team, and Dave Armstrong, who is the JNEA president, were unable to be here, so you lucked out with me. So, on behalf of the bargaining team, they would like to have me read this message for them. Part of the bargaining process is to listen to our educators and take issues to the table. This year, JNEA brought the new board policy regarding sick leave buyback. For many years, the bargaining team has opened the conversation regarding sick leave buyback, and this year, the administration and the school board listened. We appreciate that at the table, we discussed the matter, and the administrative team brought it to the board to change the policy, to change the rate of pay. JNEA supports this change in hope that our teachers stay until retirement and are compensated for their dedication. And I just say, this is a win-win for our students, because our teachers will stay longer, they will come to work rather than use their sick time, and it's just a win-win that they are going to be compensated for their dedication to the district and to the students. So we appreciate the openness and the cooperation of not only the board, but the administration of Joplin. It is always a joy to come down here and sit at the bargaining table and have that open dialogue, and that we, we as educators are listened to, and we listen to the administration, and we can come to an agreement that ultimately benefits the students of the Joplin School District. So thank you for letting me be here.
So if there's any questions? If not, the administration recommend to approve the first and final reading of policy GCBDA, professional short-term staff leaves as presented.
I move that we approve the first and final reading of policy GCBDA, professional staff short-term leaves as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Schroeder, a second by Mr. Hurd, that the board approve the first and final reading of policy GCBDA, professional staff short-term leaves as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Just want to say, thank you for being here tonight, and to the whole group, and it's always good when we can work quickly to solve an issue, isn't it?
Exactly.
So that's what, that we all work together, so that's a good thing. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. I entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Greenlee, to adjourn. Any further comments? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.